All rise. The Honorable Justices of the Supreme Court of the State of Iowa. Hear ye, hear ye. The Honorable Supreme Court of the State of Iowa is now in session.
Thank you, please be seated. Welcome to this special session of the Iowa Supreme Court held at the Grand Theater in Kiowa. We appreciate that you have taken time from your evening to spend with us this evening. There are one case will be submitted. That case is Residential and Agricultural Advisory Committee and others versus Dyersville City Council and others. Ms. Hess, you may proceed.
Justice Pass Bryant, W.P. Consello passed away. He was the author of Jules' joke, but not one that the Field of Dreams movie is based on. Mr. Consello wrote these iconic words for our state. Is this heaven? No, it's Iowa. Good evening, I'm Susan Hess. I'm here on behalf of my clients collectively referred to as the Appellants. They are 23 citizens of the city of Dyersville and the surrounding area. I am honored to appear before you tonight on their behalf at the Grand Theater in Kiowa. There are several issues before the court tonight. Procedurally, there were two writs that were issued by the District Court concerning the rezoning of the property around the Field of Dreams movie location. One ordinance, the first one, ordinance 770, was also consolidated with ordinance 777. Trial was held in Dune County from September 6th, pardon me, February 16, 2015 through February 24, 2015. Trial was held because petitioners requested that the court take additional evidence to explain the writs that were returned. The first issue that I want to talk about tonight is that the trial court erred as a matter of law when it applied the incorrect standard of review. The city's actions in this case were quasi judicial, they were not legislative.
How do you swear that to the Field of Montgomery case?
The difference between the Montgomery case and the Sutton case, and Sutton was decided later on, and this court expanded on the definition of what is a quasi judicial procedure. They adopted the Washington Supreme Court case, which found that zoning decisions may or may not be legislative based upon the nature of the act. And as an example, when a municipal legislative body enacts a comprehensive plan or a zoning code, that would be a policy making or legislative decision. When a body amends that zoning code or re-classifies the land they're under, they are in effect making an adjudication between the rights sought by the proponents of this and the opponents.
Isn't that true though that in Sutton we did not say we were overruling Montgomery? Ordinarily, if we're going to overrule one of our own presidents, we're upfront about it, aren't we?
Well, in Sutton, the case didn't, the court didn't get that far because it found that searchory is the exclusive review available when determining whether or not a city council review is being determined. So Sutton didn't have to get any further than the fact that in that case it was time barred.
Well, so isn't Montgomery the case that we are beside this kind of a procedure?
Well, the court in Sutton went farther even though they didn't have to, they could have ended it in fact.
No, that's, that's, they didn't have anything. The bottom line is my summary is still good law, right?
I disagree, Your Honor, because rezoning ordinarily occurs in response to a citizen application. And as this court stated in Sutton, readily identifiable proponents and opponents weigh in on that process. The decision is localized in its application and it affects a particular group of citizens more acutely than the public at large. So I would argue that this court should overrule Montgomery and adopt what they started to do in Sutton.
Here's my problem with this whole thing. Even after Sutton, they had the Geiser case. And in Geiser, we said it's quasi judicial and it's not substantial evidence, which is a later case, 2009, example, which I hear. The problem I have is that we had the same situation of board of justice. We had some cases saying it was quasi judicial. We had some cases that said it was substantial evidence. And I think Justice Turner wrote the opinion in Bochtringer, I think was the name of the case by ever right. Von Trager, and in Von Trager, Justice Turner traced the history of the standard review problem and came up with the substantial evidence analysis. I mean, so our cases have been very inconsistent in the zoning requirement. And I'm just wondering, you know, we can talk about the one overrule, we don't say overrule these days, they never did. But if you look at all the cases, what's the most consistent analysis to get to whether it's substantial evidence or if it's quasi judicial, which is above analysis?
I think this court got it right when it started the discussion in Sutton. It's the nature of the act. Because when you look at the difference between a legislative action and a quasi judicial action, you're weighing the rights of the parties that are most affected. And in a legislative action, you're simply adopting a plan or a zoning code. But in Sutton, the court got it right and they set forth the parameters in Fleming that are helpful to determine that the nature of the act is what makes it quasi judicial. And the rights of property owners are so great in Iowa that we need to give people a procedural avenue to come forward when there's notice and opportunity to be heard and to weigh in on this process. And that's why I think the court got it right when it adopted Sutton. And it needs to take that one step further tonight and overrule Montgomery. Because when a quasi judicial proceeding is triggered, the decision making body has to follow stricter procedural requirements, similar to those in a court proceeding. If the requirements are not followed, the decision should be invalidated by the court. Quasi judicial proceedings have to follow basic standards of due process. And it's so important in our deciding property rights because it affects certain groups in the public more acutely than the public at large.
Well, didn't you have an opportunity to be heard? I mean, this wasn't a secret proceeding, I take it, the board had agendas. And indeed, there was some discussion, but not public, about whether or not it was a shooting.
I would argue that in this case, you didn't even get proper notice. Because when the ordinance 770 was published in the newspaper, it was the wrong legal description.
Well, I understand that, which is kind of interesting issue, but just setting that aside. It seems to me, again, this is a small topic, this wasn't a secret proceeding. The citizens of we had an opportunity to know that there was interest in rezoning this property. I mean, it just, it just, it just seems to me that it's wrong to say that there was no process. I mean, maybe, maybe you think there should have been more, but aside from legal description, which I understand is an interesting one. Don't you think you had an opportunity to be heard?
No, the trials of fact in this case did not remain impartial. They came to the public hearing with a bias. They were predisposed in favor of this rezoning before the public hearing has even noticed up. Two of the city, sitting city council members attended a private meeting with the governor along with the developer in order to advance her legislative agenda to further this development.
So can city council people ever sit now even at quasi judicial capacity? And are they, you know, basically barred from considering a quasi judicial proceeding because of their predisposition?
Well, what they have to do number one is provide full disclosure to everyone the facts being considered by that decision making body.
Where does that come from, the full disclosure? You're saying they have to come up with full disclosure. Where is that statutorily required or otherwise required anywhere?
This court cited the Fleming case. And in the Fleming case, it outlines the procedure that the decision making body must follow when they're applying this quasi judicial proceeding. So that particular requirement comes from the Fleming case.
Wouldn't that, if we knew what you're asking us to, I'm worried that it would lead to less open government. The elected officials would feel they couldn't talk to their constituents, the people that elected them about pending issues because if this is like a court proceeding, they have to wait till they're in the courtroom.
I don't think that should be a concern because as long as they disclose during the proceeding where they received their information and what information they had, and as long as there's a discussion about what they're basing their decision on, then that should not be an issue.
Were any of your clients some fooled by the mistaken legal description? Or did everyone know all along what property was in play?
I don't believe the record disclosures that anyone was necessarily fooled by. The problem is that it is arbitrary and capricious and the city acted in a haphazard and hurried manner. They rezoned, misdescribed, I should say, an 40 acre parcel that included a parcel of land that wasn't even within their jurisdiction. So this is not just a minor error. So were my clients fooled, there's nothing in the evidence necessarily suggests that, but the public is entitled to notice of the proceedings?
Did the notice here, original notice include legal description?
The notice that was published in the paper of ordinance 770 did include the legal description and a map.
The notice of, the notice of the city council meeting that's issued, did that include the proposed legal description?
Yes, it did. And the actual ordinance itself, which was not published in the paper, included a map. The only thing that was published in the publication providing notice to the public was the actual legal description. No map. So that a person would have actually had to gone to the clerk at the city or attended the city council meeting to see the map to see what property was actually being described. So if a person relied simply on the legal description that was posted in the newspapers, they would have been misled. That's not proper notice. And if we get past that, ordinance 770 is arbitrary, capricious, and unreasonable. There was little or no investigation, information, analysis, or fact finding necessary to ensure that this rezoning furthered the public's safety, health, morals, and welfare for people of Dyersville. There were no studies done by the city prior to the public hearing on the rezoning and nothing to base the decision on other than representations and presentations by the developer. Further evidence of the haphazard manner which this rezoning was done was the legal description. No one testified in favor of this rezoning at the public hearing. And at the public hearing, when members of the public attempted to present a signed petition contesting rezoning and also outlining their concerns, it was rejected by the city attorney. The city failed to follow their own policies, comprehensive plan, and adopted procedures in this rezoning.
Let's talk about this arbitrary, capricious argument. Supposing we decide that we're going to follow Montgomery, Montgomery case and come to the conclusion that this is a legislative proceeding and not quasi judicial. Does that defeat your arbitrary, capricious, reasonable argument?
No, I don't think it does, Your Honor.
I thought that would be your answer. And then my follow up is, you know, Dyersville's not a huge, huge city. Is it irrational not to have expensive and comprehensive planning? You want to study of this, study of that, study of this, study of water, study of traffic, study emergency medical services, study of firing, impact of large, etc. Well, heavens. Isn't there arguments, that the small cities could hardly proceed if they had to have comprehensive studies that might be more appropriate than the metropolitan area?
No, none of these studies were done. In fact, the developers didn't even have a plan. This was going to be a 24 field complex, a huge commercial development out in an area where there was no commercial development prior to that. The scope of this project required additional studies.
Well, what about the, they did the utility extension study that was all the way back in 2011. And that was a study that was done about whether they could handle the water and the sewage out there and everything was fine with that. During part of these proceedings, you had people from the soil and water conservation came in and said that there was no problems and in fact it might be better if in fact the, I think they said it was better in the watershed. I can't remember the name of the creek that runs through there. They said it was going to be better. So they did talk about water, they talked about runoff, they talked about a number of things throughout this 18 month period or so that they were discussing this, didn't they?
The 2011 study by IIW was simply a wastewater management feasibility study to determine what the cost and proper route would be for the water and sewer to be run to the development.
But didn't they also say that yes, it could be done and this is going to be the cause?
They gave options, but they also indicated in that study that they were concerned about the load that it would put on the existing infrastructure.
And they responded to that by saying, yes, sometimes we're at full capacity now and at some point in the future, we may need to have additional facilities or infrastructure to handle it, didn't they?
Yes, they did, but...
So they discussed all of, they discussed both of those things. Clear back, didn't they?
That was in 2011 and IIW also made additional recommendations in that report. They indicated that the city should review its annexation plan at that time, the 2003 annexation plan. The city failed to do that and the annexation plan did not call for any commercial development out as far as the Field of Dreams going out to 2023. So the city failed to do basic recommendations from IIW, the engineer firm that they hired to do this study. That to me is arbitrary and capricious.
Counsel, I know your time's up, but let me just ask you a question before you sit down. The Field of Dreams is a movie about this romantic notion of a baseball field in the middle of a cornfield. And it goes hand in hand, you eat the corn for the concept to be played out in a business sense. Can you address your spot zoning argument in that context?
Sure. With regard to the spot zoning, some of the considerations that, well, first of all, the district court failed to address spot zoning at all.
It's an issue that you raise.
Yes.
How is it that you argue this issue is issue in the context of what is the vision here?
The 193 acres surrounding the Field of Dreams site is previously packed and it's always been farmed in all signs. There's no pressure development close proximity to this. There's no, there is no close discussion of any pressure development and no suggestion in any of the plans that agriculture will have to take a lot of production or that this is the highest investment use of land. The CSR on phase one of this development was 85. And that is, well, of the 99 counties in Iowa only average in the 70s. So this is some of the highest investment land in each county. There was no discussion about whether or not the highest investment use of this land is commercial.
Well, without this surrounding corn, the baseball field, 24 baseball fields, if they wanted to build out there, nothing's going to survive, is it? Roger?
I would argue that it would not. And feasibility studies, I mean, were skewed in favor of the developer and they weren't supported by any of the evidence in this case.
Thank you. Swipes?
Good evening, to the Honorable Court, opposing counsel. My name is Jen White, first to approve the adjournments of the matter. I'm here today on behalf of the Honorable justices. Your Honors, for the last four years now, petitions have been started at the Supreme Court of the Senate to overturn Montgomery and establish changing the essential nature of the rezoning process from legislative to judicial.
Can I ask a question about that? I'm okay. This whole area seems to be confusing, at least to me. You contend it's legislative. And if you read Geiser, which is a case after, around after Sutton, it says if it's truly a legislative function, it's not reviewable. And then the Geiser talks in terms of if you change the nature of the district, in other words, you change C2 and what C2 should be or shouldn't be, et cetera. That's purely legislative, it's not going to be reviewable. But if you change inside the district of a specific piece of property, that becomes quasi judicial. And with that analysis, doesn't that make Sutton and Montgomery sort of make sense?
Yes, in the sense that when you are changing the boundaries within the larger area, you are focusing more on the effects it would have on individual property owners. How, that that decision is more likely to have proponents and opponents, people, a smaller group of people that are going to be affected by the decision. And the process becomes quasi judicial. The process, no disanopportunity to be heard, which is all said and said. All said and said was the process is quasi judicial. But the essential nature of the rezoning action is still legislative.
Well, everything the city council does legislative, they do what they orders. But a lot of things agencies do legislative, because they do a quite rule. But it seems to me in this area, if it is truly legislative, what you'll say is there is never a recourse for any citizen to appeal the zoning, to change your property zoning, if it's truly legislative, that's what's in the Gasser. If it's truly legislative, there's no way to appeal at all because it's not reviewable. Because we don't, we don't review legislative enactment. So that doesn't make sense to me. Why would the, why would the legislature, why would we allow a searchory to contest a rezoning of a specific piece of property if it's not reviewable?
I think that that interpretation of by state or state of government is too far in the opposite direction of what the petitioners in this case would like you to do. I think that what Sutton did was just clarify Montgomery. Montgomery said searchory is an additive that is available for persons who are agreed by quasi judicial actions in the case of rezoning of city council. Sutton simply said it is the, it is the only way you can get there. And I do believe there has to be recourse for persons who do oppose the...
So this Geiser decided only after Montgomery and after Sutton?
I think it's two different facts and two different sets of issues. I think that in the rezoning situation, you have groups of individuals who are going to, more so than others, be affected by the decision. And Sutton said your way of appealing that to a higher court is through searchory and is only through searchory process. When the court is reviewing the decision of a city council or board of supervisors in the rezoning, they are doing so under the umbrella that zoning ordinance is carried a strong presumption of validity. And to overcome that presumption, the burden is on the petitioners to show that that ordinance or that rezoning has no reasonable relationship to any proper purpose. What is undisputed on the record here is that every respondent named in this case that voted to rezon that property did so because they believed that it was better, that it was in the federance of the Dyersville economy, job growth, tax revenue, and tourism. That is undisputed. What is also undisputed is that this was not just one hearing. This was not just one appearance on August 6th, 2012 before the Dyersville City Council. There were, including, I'm sorry, August 6th, 2012, there were, including that August 6th, 12 public hearings before the city council and also before the Planning and Zoning Committee.
Let me ask you a question on this arbitrary mispoint. The district court made a finding that basically the Planning and Zoning Commission and the city council didn't pay any attention to the comprehensive plan in adopting this zoning ordinance. Why isn't that arbitrary? Since the law requires that zoning be in accordance with the plan.
It's because the law requires that it be in accordance with the comprehensive plan. And this court has held that to be in accordance with the comprehensive plan, the board has to give full consideration to the problems presented, including the needs of the public, changing conditions, the similarity of the same area. It has done that, it has acted in accordance with the comprehensive plan.
But is it perhaps arbitrary to, when you're supposed to be acting in accordance with the plan, not to even be aware of the plan or pay any attention to the plan if you are aware of it? Isn't that maybe arbitrary?
Well, I also don't think that that's consistent with the facts on the record. I understand what the district court said in that respect, but the facts on the record show that the city responding English did review the 1890 plans. The other city council members testified that they believed that the rezoning and the development that would follow would be consistent with the betterment of Dyersville economy. Also, you have to look at the process itself. The process itself is comprehensive. A little bit ago up here, we talked about what types of studies that were required to be situated made. And the court rightly pointed out that there was a conceptual water and sewer study that was presented to the city council on April 2nd of 2012. There was also an economic and physical impact study that was presented back in January, February of 2012. There was a presentation by the Community Soil and Water Conservation District regarding stormwater watershed management on July 6th, 2012. At the Planning and Zoning Committee, there was information presented about traffic concerns and how road and traffic would be affected. And the reason that I bring this up is because the city council and the respondents in this case in 12 public hearings through four formal or informal studies, comprehensively listened and took into consideration all different viewpoints on this. Now, what, in reviewing the comprehensive plan, I don't know if that is, there's five different plans that were in existence at the time of this rezoning. The overarching theme was develop, when you're looking at developments, you need to take, outside of the downtown business district, you need to take into consideration the ability to get water and sewer out there and whether or not there was a connection to roadways. One of the very first things the respondent did in this case following the IIW study was in general, in general, in understanding, where they pushed the cost of water and sewer being run out to, they increased their own water and sewer capabilities and ran it out to the Field of Dreams and the cost of the developer.
Is that in effect an amendment to the comprehensive plan?
Yes. Yes, it is. And the, there is a decision out of Washington State, 2006, Adams Anderson, which, remembering and understanding, is probably a factor in how this comprehensive plan happens.
Well, wasn't there a provision in the memory and understanding that the city is to use their best efforts to achieve the rezoning?
Yes.
And does that undermine in any way the integrity of the whole thing process?
No.
Why not?
Because what the memorandum of understanding was stating, and what was very clearly stated to the board, or to the city council that day, was that we are not saying that we're going to understand everything that's going to come before us. We are still going to go through all the proper steps. But the developer needs to know, and the city needs to know, that if we lose on to that.
Does the developer lead in the same governmental process of the citizens of this community and all rally around the idea that government is open and transparent and fair for both parties?
Yes.
And why is it then that the city council has taken to a memorandum of agreement telling the developer that they will use their best efforts to achieve rezoning?
Because all the memorandum of understanding that was at the city council meeting on June 18th of 2012, all that was saying was, listen, we're going to look into this, we're going to do our diligence, we're going to see if this is right for Dyersville.
But they did more than that. They went to meetings in Des Moines, they talked to legislators, they entertained legislators, they did all this stuff, which is a little bit more than sitting back waiting for it to be presented to them, which gives the appearance that, you know, financially, if you figure out a way to make this work, they're going to work it, which seems actually contrary to democratic government.
To say that city council members are elected official is prohibited from accepting viewpoints outside of those that are presented within the confines of the city council, meaning nor is it the commonality of their position.
Would that be true in a spot zoning context?
And?
If you had a spot zoning issue or it's a residential area, if somebody wanted to put a quick trip or a meeting star, and it's a spot zoning issue solely, would it be okay for the decision maker to consult with the governor, consult with political groups, and tell the governor and political groups that they would do everything they could to achieve a spot zoning? Would that be okay?
He, well, I think that's beyond what occurred here. We didn't have a situation where assurances were given to legislators. We didn't have a situation where the council gave any assurances to the developers that it would understand all of this. All it said was, listen, we're going to take a look at it, we're going to do what we're not able to do, which is look at all the facts that have been presented to us.
Yeah, I guess it seems to me, in a legislative context, if this is actually a legislative action, or actually, legislators entertain input of public policy all the time, city council members consulting the political groups, and that happens all the time, it is perfectly fine. And even pre-credits in a legislative context is perfectly fine. You can have an advocate who runs the city council based on some large legislative goal of raising money, if you thought, perhaps, as the arts and education on a life. But the difference between a legislative process, which is that broad policy distinction, the broad implementation of policy, the adoption of comprehensive plans is quicker than legislating. The adoption of broad, so any regulation is legislating. But here, we've got a particular piece of property, and one of the disputes, whether this is spot zoning or not, the smaller piece of property is, the less legislative it looks, and the more we have to try and quasaj judicial it becomes. It seems to me, what city council members can appropriately do in a quasi judicial setting is different than what's said. Do you agree with that general proposition? Roger.
I would, I would state that what the city council, which was presented with a rezoning ordinance, is required to do, is what they're now required to do, is make a decision as to, this side may be better off with it. I'm going to go with the facts of this person presented. The obligation of the city council in rezoning is determining whether or not that rezoning and that development, potential development, is in favor of, in this case, Dyersville's public health, safety, and welfare.
Could you address the buffer zones? What was the purpose of that 200, what strip? Was it to diminish the rights, give rights to jack at the neighboring property owners?
The purpose for the buffer zone was to provide a strip of land that would continue to be, is there anything I can do on that? To put a strip of land around those property owners who had voiced concerns or objections to the rezoning.
So just trying to help them?
To your question as to whether or not it would prohibit the use of the protest provision under 414.5 or Dyersville ordinance 165.395, the answer is yes. But that's not a problem. And in fact, the majority of state jurisdictions have held that those types of buffer zones, to prevent the application of the supermajority provision, is legal.
You had a supermajority hanging.
We had a supermajority for 414.5, 164, 165.395 required by the manners.
Thank you, Ms. Weiss.
Thank you.
Staffs, may I present your fellow partner?
I just want to address that last point, by the way, because when it's, in the event that you take out the two city council members who were clearly kind of biased or not impartial, then they didn't have a special majority. Those two city council members should have introduced themselves on that bill.
Is there anything on the record showing that there was any personal gain, financial gain, either directed by the city council persons?
It doesn't have to be a financial gain. It's an appearance of inferiority. They were impartial because they had already taken a stand in favor of this development.
Well, people don't get elected office always take a stand. I mean, you could probably figure out what Trump's going to do, you maybe can't. You could probably figure out what Trump is going to do, and maybe you can't, can't figure out what everyone's going to do. I mean, they're telling you what they're going to do. I mean, so much more than that.
There is a hearing process that's statutorily defined in Dyersville ordinances, and that is at 165 from 394, that is notice of a public hearing. A quasi judicial body sitting at a public hearing is required to be impartial. They were to set that as?
That's just an interruption, just because I'm still having trouble with the parameters of this quasi judicial type of function. Again, I may be Sutton more narrowly than you, but I think that is probably a given. But now, all of a sudden, even if we take your approach that this is a purely quasi judicial, all of a sudden now rejecting all these other requirements, all these other things, which we've never defined before, you're coming up with them, and it all sounds good, and a normal court proceeding toward administrative agency action, what I consider to be more of a judiciary function, but there's, where can we draw all these things from?
I wouldn't say that you did adopt them when you adopted the Fleming case. The Fleming case?
The Fleming case doesn't give us all these specifics that you're talking about.
The Fleming case does give that, and so my quasi judicial proceeding is required to look like.
But in the notfall, those things says, are standards of what the quasi judicial process is supposed to look like?
You adopted the Fleming case, and I believe that those factors can.
And again, we will disagree on the parameters of that. And we said, this is how Washington said, if it's got these kinds of elements, it's a quasi judicial type of proceeding. But we didn't say that that's what all future quasi judicial proceedings in this state have to look like.
I would argue that this supports opportunity to define what that looks like, and that they should do that in this case. I want to take issue with something else that council respondents talked about with regard to that economic and fiscal impact study. That study was paid for by the developer. Now, the city argues that rezoning from A1 to C2 was reasonably related to a legitimate interest in improving economy towards a second or maximum. That economic impact study boasts that twenty-two years after the release of the vehicle dreams bill site in Dyersville, they continue to attract tens of thousands of tourists per year. There's no testimony in this record anywhere to support the contention that that site did an additional commercial development to attract tourism. There's no evidence in the record that that site is losing in tourism. I want to go back to another point.
That could be, but you know, at some point, you defer to the local authorities. So we're sitting here, or we sit in the audience, and we're going to review the record in care of the orders, but, you know, the question of whether rezoning of this property is going to have a positive effect on the impact of the city, Dyersville, and all its felony circumstances, we're not the best positioned judge in the court compared to the members of the city council.
I agree, but if the city had done the studies, and the appropriate fact finding and analysis that they were required to do, that the law demands, then they probably would have not voted in favor of this. Now, another comment was made that the actions by the city council actually undermine the process. It is troublesome that the developer was driving the boss and dictating the terms in this case. She had her crucial seventeen week timeline that she was working on with city officials. Those city officials implemented that timeline to make sure that she was able to meet all of her deadlines for her development. They waived all the meetings of the ordinance, and they pushed this through, the developer's timeline. That, to me, is troublesome. Additionally, I wanted to address the buffer zone. The stated purpose on the record of that buffer zone was that they used it just the way they did in the ethanol plant, where there was opposition by the neighboring owners. Do we want to set a precedent that allows the use of penalty to trample over rights of the citizens that are statutorily defined? Where there's a process, the neighboring owners apply an objection, and the city, by its own ordinance, crafts it in such a way that takes away that objection. We shouldn't allow those things to stand.
And did it take away the objection because everybody was unhappy, because now you had a 200-foot buffer around it?
The 200-foot buffer does nothing to leave any concerns about commercial development being located around agricultural activity. A 200, there's no evidence in the record that that 200-foot buffer zone could do anything to prevent something.
They didn't want the ethanol plant, you give them another 200 feet, so it's 200 feet further away from your location. And that doesn't have benefit? I appreciate 200 feet of distance between something that I didn't want in the first place.
During the public hearing, one of the citizens actually spoke against that, and he indicated, why doesn't the city create 199-foot buffer zone? And, you know, the city wasn't willing to do that. 199 feet moved to the protest area would still be something that would alleviate the distance.
The section makes some of the argument.
Property rights are so important in Iowa, especially when we're talking about rezoning decisions that affect a particular group of citizens who are key to the public at large. This is precisely why our case law requires the rezoning process to be quasi judicial. Tonight, you have the opportunity to further define the regulations of Sutton, and rule definitively that the rezoning is quasi judicial process by the nature of its security. If there's any question that Sutton doesn't say that, this is the opportunity to clarify. Many of the clients that are represented tonight make their living smart. They have invested in the land they can begin and around in the other areas. I'd like to end with a quote from the book She Was General. It's a conversation between Dack Ram and Ray Consella. Dack says, "Once the wind touches you, the wind never blows so cold again. You feel for the land like it was your child. When that happens, you can't be bought." Ray Consella replies, "I know." And he thinks of the stock throughout the Iowa space. I ask that you reverse the District Court ruling and sustain both the rest seven seventy-eight, seven seven seven. Thank you for your time.
Thank you as well, Ms. Hess. The case that is now submitted for court, however, I just wanted to direct a few comments to those who have come to witness the court proceeding this evening. We hold the court outside Des Moines, the communities across Iowa, to give more Iowans an opportunity to see that this great court do its work and to help fans' understanding of the role of our courts in this state, and its important role in governing. Keweco is the twenty-second community that we have met in, in the last five years. We hope this court session tonight will not only have an interesting for you, but also helpful in revealing to you the work that we do. As you witnessed, and as you saw on this stage tonight, the issues presented to us are not easy, they're not one-dimensional, they're complex, and they involve many, many interests. They also involve matters that are very important to many people in Iowa and to many communities. We will now make a decision that will resolve in a written opinion, and we return to Des Moines and confuse the case, and begin that decision-making process. And if you're interested in the result, we're probably looking at two to three months before the decision will be out. You may follow along on our website. Thomas Jefferson wrote around 235 years ago that it was critically important for the public to be informed of its development in a way that is appropriate. And I think he would be very pleased with this community and its response tonight. Thank you again for being part of this, and we look forward to joining you in reception just outside this beautiful venue. With that, I'd be with the jury court.
Hear ye, hear ye! The Honorable Supreme Court of the State of Iowa is now adjourned.